I don't know how that could be done.
Owls are up.
Okay.
So now, if you want to see when people want to try to get in.
Where's the button that says?
Yeah. I remember when they used to be.
Donald Searns in there, isn't it?
You know, I lived, my old place was in Burlington for about five years.
I think you have to click on his net though, did you get him?
Yeah, I think I was up there like.
Go on the blue.
Six years or something like that.
Yeah.
And I think probably half those years, pretty much.
Yeah, it looks like maybe.
I remember the time where folks came up to us and you go down. I did stupid things.
So if you want to see them, maybe you click on like.
When I see this one, but they're up.
There we do. Dan's not muted, so that's good.
Well, I walked in with ice. So I went down and I drove around the ferry.
If you can unclick his video.
The harbor.
Dan's video. You know, he appears.
We got to him, told us to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, it blows my mind. Someone the ice has shown.
Dan, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
And we can see you too, Dan. You don't know what to do. I'm not going to pick it up. It's out there.
Yeah.
That's absolutely right. Sorry, my business is good. I've been here. This guy's just a little. So hello.
Hi, George.
You doing all right, man?
Yeah, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
Good.
Thank you. What's up, man?
You too.
Again, you can't give me a face.
Neither can I.
But that doesn't matter.
The viewer.
Can just do the meeting.
God, maybe it's. I just got to watch the participants.
John.
Um. Uh, two minutes. We seem to have lost ourselves again.
Lost.
I'm gonna restart it.
You mean you ended it?
I don't, I didn't end it. I'm gonna restart it.
Oh.
That's why you don't cut down your attention, because then yours is.
That's weird, we.
And I don't have, there's no more, there's no participants.
That's a challenge.
I don't know, you heard Dan? Dan, say something.
I think it's because, I think the meeting was over.
Dan, are you, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just the screen went wonky.
Um, because there's no participants, we'll somebody will lose somebody in future unless we get back to the screen.
Right.
And I doubt it is.
No.
I don't know if it's a team leadership or some organization in barely time.
Always has this.
Meetings.
All very technical.
Participants.
Six o'clock.
I forget if you take it. It's in the fourth. It's sure when it gets.
Kevin, please, you'll wait until you're ready.
I am not.
Here's the meeting, here, this does the Zoom icon.
Couple of years, there were times in there.
Yeah.
Was this complete?
Now you're just in like kind of weird split screen. So click on maximize that, put on a box, that will yeah.
Well, there is a lot of times.
Now you got the participants over here.
Oh, yeah, there they are.
Yeah, live panelists.
It's, they can move.
Some people here in this town would give me a rough time.
I mean, maybe, maybe you'll like this better, but I think.
I'm just gonna.
Main speaker, right.
And that was. Go back, go back to screen.
I mean, speaker, pretty hard to click that.
Jim Dreysh, do you know Jim?
Yeah.
It's a tractor herd.
As long as I have the participants. At least I put mine in.
Stay over here. Yeah, or to see if somebody new comes in, so I don't know. Let's get going.
Wait, I think you had this news, I know it is.
He does live on a hill, but still.
That was a landing spot. Well, I had gone out of town and came back in time, like at first. You know, I spent late in March.
Yes, yeah.
So Dave's not here, Dave enjoyed listening.
Probably he only stopped, the kids are.
She had to stay down. You're just down.
Thank you, thank you. Snowed over there.
Um, I don't have a pen. Oh, wait, I have a pencil, so I can just. Click on it.
I'm familiar with the country trails. The kids.
Okay.
They wanted to skate.
Six thirty-seven.
Six thirty-seven.
So, uh, middle of last year.
We just opened a meeting.
Got the director.
Because we have visitors from afar and it's not the best night out, why don't we just alter the.
Stay on test.
Agenda and deal with town plan business first. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
James, what?
Town plan business. What's your name?
My name is David Weissach.
Thank you.
Should have said Peter Grant or Robert.
Okay, um, I don't know what David had planned.
I can tell you where we are.
Okay.
We are in a holding pattern.
Yes.
I think I referred to it that way. The, um, the town plan that will be in, in the minutes that we will approve tonight. Do you want to approve the minutes first?
No.
Okay. At the last meeting, the February fifth meeting, or I think that was a bit.
Yeah, it was February, oh, eighteen.
The eighteen was the last meeting. It was a joint meeting with.
Yeah. Well, all right, the meeting prior to that was February fifth.
Yes.
We, um, formally passed the version of the town plan. It was passed on to the town manager and the select board chair and over to Two Rivers and to the rest of the commission. We'll address the town plan that I just referred to, the twenty-twenty-five town plan, in probably another two months-ish. Because the select board is going through the process currently of re-adopting the twenty-seventeen town plan. And that should be finished, you agreed on an April something is your last hearing, I, I can look. Something like that. Um, when they will have finished their re-adoption process. And then, in concert with that, and I don't want to jump ahead of what Dave might think, but sometime in April when we're coordinating, we either can warn ours to jump over your last one, or we can wait until they've formally finished and then warn it and go through our hearing. Once we've completed our hearing, any adjustments we want to make, then we will send the revised, if it is, version, we'll go to the select board. The select board will warn two hearings and then, in that whole process, another version will go to Two Rivers so that they can double check to make sure that we're in sync with theirs. And if all goes to plan, I would say early fall or so-ish, oh, why do I say ish?
Ish.
It's the wiggle room I need on this conversation. That we should be in a position to then finally adopt it.
Okay, I think, I think we're all agreed in the version that we are talking about is two-point-five-point-two-five, is that correct?
I believe so, but I'll have to double check, I do have it here, just to make sure which one I sent out.
Yep.
Um, two-point-two-five.
Okay.
Two-point-five-point-two-five.
Okay.
Steve, just so, make sure I understood it, the critical pass is starting tonight, we're, we've already.
We've already passed this, Jay just wanted, I believe, an update on what our timeline is from now on.
Next step.
For everybody that's here.
Next step in the critical path.
The next step for us?
The next step in the town plan critical path.
On, on the twenty-five town plan or seventeen? Because we have two of them going through.
Yes, yes, I would say both, because they're working harmoniously.
Okay, well seventeen should be finished by the middle of April, seventeenth, I think, or eighteenth? I'll look it up.
Yeah.
And when you say finished, meaning that it will have been re-adopted and will be the controlling.
They can, they can have it.
Fourteenth?
It's a Monday.
Monday to fourteenth.
Whatever that Monday it is, yeah.
Yeah.
The fourteenth. Actually, no. First Monday is the seventh, so it might be the twenty-first.
Oh.
I can let.
Yes, the twenty-first is what we said.
Easter Monday.
Um, okay, so we got that, so we've got the re-adoption.
Re-adoption, my understanding, and certainly correct me, it was your meeting, that they said that they would hold the, um, the hearing and then at that meeting that immediately follows that hearing, you would formally adopt it, re-adopt it, which would then, now for me, I don't know, is that, it has to go somewhere else after that, that's it?
When you say holding a hearing, what, what does that mean?
We have to.
The select board is.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's with the select. That one is strictly.
We don't expect any.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not changing anything, it's just that we have to publicly say regardless.
But they have to at least warn it, even though they can't make changes even at that hearing, but they have to go through that, if you will, timed process. And then, we would start our process for a thirty-day warning somewhere around the middle of April, I'll say it that way.
Okay, um, so if March twenty-first is the first of your public meetings, we would jump ahead.
April twenty-first is their second one.
Oh, is their second one?
Yeah.
Yep.
So April second is a Monday?
April twenty-first.
Twenty-first is when it's linked to.
They have their first one on March seven, will be March seventeenth.
Okay, I thought I just heard March twenty-first.
I didn't have my calendar open.
Okay, so what is the seventeenth?
So I, I can follow up with the exact case, I don't have them.
The one that you said the other night, because you moved the meeting.
Yeah.
March seventeenth is their first warned hearing.
Okay.
And April twenty-first is their second warned hearing.
Okay.
And Kevin, you can sort of, I'm not sure, I don't think you're involved, but your office has been involved in printing up a warning.
Yep, yep.
So do those dates sound familiar?
Yep.
Yeah, and as you said, it's just kind of a pro forma process you got to.
Yep. For the, for the twenty-seventeen re-adoption, and then ours will then go back on track, we'll have our warned hearing.
For mid-May, because we'll have one in the thirty day.
Yep, and then the select board will follow with two warned hearings, and that should take us into early fall, whatever the date happens to be.
Okay.
That we would formally adopt the new town plan.
As I understand it, it's above the first few days in May, when the town plan would expire, if it's the seventh.
It was close to the middle of May.
Through the middle of May.
It was close to the middle of May.
Do you, do you know what the date is?
I don't really know exactly what the date was.
So your current town plan?
Current one.
I just, things always seem to go wrong, and it's always nice to have a little cushion.
There's, there is, there's a month cushion there to re-adopt.
Oh, May fifteenth, it's May fifteenth.
It was May fifteenth, then, okay.
Yeah.
See, it's shortened already.
It's okay.
I, I say that, I mean, I've got that in my notes, but I wouldn't mind a validation.
Okay. I want to put the dates in because in the minutes of this meeting, I just want it spelled out so everybody knows where we're at. Okay, um, Kevin?
Yes.
David didn't tell me why you're here.
Oh. Oh, oh, I'm here for municipal planning grant. And has he told you anything about what?
Well, you know, this is.
We.
Could use info.
Okay, I will start, I'll start from the get-go. So I was at the select board on Monday, virtually, and I've talked, I've been emailing David and John, talking with them. And the idea is to, to draft a, what we call a unified bylaw, which is a zoning slash subdivision bylaw, after the plan stuff gets done, because you can't do too many things at once. The plan stuff will be kind of important because it sets the foundation for that, and so you can kind of be general in the plan and then get more specific in the bylaw, but you can't do it the other way around, so we have to be very careful, and that's why, once we get the plan in kind of its almost final shape, we'll be definitely checking in going, wait, did we say something in there? And so I understand that process will be through the summer, so this would not start until the fall, that's okay, there's plenty of room. But the application from municipal planning grant is due the end of the month, there's a resolution form that the select board signs and that the chair signs, the chair of planning commission signs, it says, yes, we want to apply for this grant. It doesn't have hardly anything on the form, the actual application is, is all online. But this is the guts of what I first drafted and based upon the select board conversation on Monday, I'm proposing we move this round a little bit and, and hopefully correct me if I'm sending us off someplace dead.
Is there an extra one, do you?
We should have, but I think there's probably an extra couple. Oh, sure. And, and the big thing, I think, is that you're gonna need to process, you have a lot of processes, because people think bylaws do things that they don't do. There's a lot of misinformation in the world these days, and I call it process literacy. They, people jump to conclusions based upon things that they think a zoning or subdivision bylaw necessarily does, and it doesn't do that, so you kind of have to dispel a bunch of this as you go along, and you kind of have to, I would say you have to be open. We've been here before in Heartland, working on not a unified bylaw, but just a basic zoning bylaw. And that kind of flared out.
The deadline for submitting the application is the thirty-first?
Of March.
Yeah.
And so what we would do is we would prepare the gut, this is kind of the guts of the application, then you have to write some more fluffy stuff. This is really, it's kind of what are you gonna do, what's it gonna cost? After talking with the select board, they, we had two kickoff meetings in there, and they suggested we boil that to one kickoff meeting. And then I had three forums in there, and I'm thinking we can make that to two, and then that gives us more time, more working time, same amount of time overall, but more working time at the planning commission level as we actually go through all the pieces and why they're there. I think regarding some of the public stuff, what we can try to do is make sure that this meeting, you know, through Zoom and other things, that people understand, you're welcome to come and watch us do all the things that we do. And, um, you know, I have infinite stomach for that type of thing, I've been doing it a long time, Mr. James. I think the general public ones, they see that, they will understand this is not nefarious stuff, it's just, you know, slogging your way through various provisions out there. The goal is to make a very basic bylaw, and that is, is definitely, you know, on our plate to keep driving that to more basic versions that we can, both for subdivision and for zoning. And the subdivision would obviously deal with subdividing land, and the zoning would be, you know, what users go where, and that type of thing.
Say that last part.
What users go where, you know, and we've, there's been a lot of changes in housing law recently in Vermont. We don't have to worry about fixing your bylaw because you don't have one, we just put that stuff in. But a lot of the, um, reducing limitations on how, kinds of housing, the places that you can put housing, the density especially that you can put housing. If you can fit your septic and well on the lot, why does the lot have to be bigger? It doesn't need to be, unless there's some other reason why you're stretching things up, but not just for water quality and that type of stuff. It would be very good considering the Act two-fifty things that have come up, because zoning would just be like from Act two-fifty, you, you'd agree with everything, but you're not getting a zoning permit, then not gonna happen. There is no, some people think, sometimes applicants try to pretend, but there is no, ooh, I got an Act two-fifty permit, therefore you should give me a zoning permit type thing. Totally independent processes. Very easy in zoning to do like, not permitted, not gonna happen. Cell towers are relatively precluded, as amongst other things, by your zoning dealing with them, so your plan is really the place to better deal with them because you can't, basically you can't give a zoning permit for a cell tower. Or for solar installations, for that matter. And some other things out there, but that's, so this is, this is the process, again, doing less kickoff, more working sessions, two forums, I think, instead of the three out there. This includes direct costs for like noticing meetings and putting things in the paper. No matter how much process you do, people will at the end go, well, you all hid in the basement, did this in the dark. But at a certain point, that was very incredulity, if, if we've done it so much in the public eye. And I am always welcome to try to do, you know, we, we do forums, we put notices out, but I'm always welcome to try to like, how can we do this differently? How can we, can we do it at the same night as the school play or with a basketball game or, you know, some way to get more people in there? I've sat in, um, in town offices during voting, because I wasn't involved in voting, you know, then you can be in the polling place with literally a sign by my head and said, who's this guy? And a big map on the wall, and then people stop and you talk to people, because you need to reach the people who aren't the usual people who come to the meetings. And, and there's a lot of people out there, right in town, thousands, that we need to reach, so any ways to do that are welcome to be thought of. Because this grant is bigger and you are not a rural town for Vermont purposes, you have to go out to bid. So we can help you with the application and then we'd love to build the project, but it will be a bidding process to the select board. We can't, and so because of that, we can't help the select board like we do bidding a bridge or something, because we're gonna be a bidder. Kevin, just to clarify, you'll help with the grant application? Yes. And then we need to want to bid. Yes, and then we have to step away.
Okay, so the bid goes out.
Yeah.
Who other than you folks would be bidding?
There are private planning consultants out there, not many down in this neck of the woods, more up in the, you know, Chittenden County area and stuff, but it's possible.
Um, you may be getting to this, but do we start out with just a complete blank page and fill it in? Or are there some structures that we need to start with and then refine to meet our needs?
Yes, it's more like that, it's, there are certain pieces that you're gonna have that are kind of administrative pieces, and then there are the custom pieces that come depending upon what your plan said. So if your plan said you have five land use areas, then you have five districts, what's gonna go on in each one of them? That's where a lot of the time goes on, versus like, what's the non-conformity clause, or how do you deal with a variance or that type of thing? Because those things are just kind of set. You can fiddle with them a little bit, but they're, they're kind of rote. Yep.
On that very subject, this is a history lesson, not a repeat of the past.
Good.
You may well remember, because you were part and parcel of our two thousand and fifteen zoning witness that we spent, the planning commission spent two and a half, maybe three years working on. We, it didn't get very broad, at the time, everybody has their idea, you know, what they should be, I know the rules of the game have changed, but there's one person that's presently on the select board who wasn't in two thousand and fifteen, and he's in your business. And he said, oh my God, he said, boy, that's a tight document that you prepared, but we have it, we have a copy of the two thousand. Not that, you know, is there any value to going back just to look to see what the lay of the land was and what we might, that what might be deemed as a, as a pretty tight ordinance? Not that we want to re-adopt it.
Right.
But it's just.
Yeah, I mean, it, it doesn't hurt, we, we kind of, um, just over the last couple of years, I've been building a very stripped-down ordinance, just to try to, try to get out there, because we have some other communities that are also interested in the same type of thing. One of the big things, I think, is you can reference statute and make things very small, but then you gotta go find the statute and go, well, you know, like, hold a hearing per forty-four sixty-four or whatever, and then you go, well, what's that say? And so you can put that in the document or you can actually just put the little link, and now it is, we can actually put a link link in, so that's handy. There are other things about writing the document a little more instructional so that people know, oh, here's this, because, you know, the more I do this, the more I realize this stuff is not obvious. And it's obvious to me and people in the field, but you know, you, you don't get a conditional use permit, you always get conditional use approval and then you go get a standard permit, so. Why is one called one and what's the other one called, and you know, what are the things that don't get a permit? I know last time we worked a lot on the exemptions clause, which I like to put right up front, you don't need a permit, literally. Doing any of these twenty things, you don't need to come talk to us. And, and there are other things, especially along the housing line, where we have thought of things where you go, don't need a permit, because then you don't have an appeal. And so if you want to do certain things, you know, you want to put an apartment in your garage, maybe we don't care ever on our side. You just go do it. You do have that building registration ordinance thing, which is kind of nice, because it takes care of some stuff about at least letting people know, A, there's rules, because, for example, everybody doing contractor-led construction these days has to comply with the state of building energy standard. But nobody knows those things exist, you know, they just aren't, people aren't born knowing that. And the standard way is when you come in for a zoning permit, they give you a copy of the building energy standard, well, there's no such process right now. So, but we can link it to the building registration ordinance, one of the things. There's some other permits and stuff out there that aren't your permits, that would be good for people to just know and deal with. But yeah, I would say that's, that old thing is not bad, part of that old thing was driven by the specificity in your town plan. And you may, there are places where you may want to say, well.
Or the lack thereof.
Or, or the lack thereof, yeah. And, um, but in general, like, your town plan reads things, it has like five acres and two acres and things like that, whereas a general town plan says small or large or whatever. Then comes zoning time, you figure it out, because if your town plan says two acres, comes zoning time, it's two acres, we can't move that. And so it's better sometimes to give yourself a little room over here and get the details later. So that's the proposal before you, we'll be modifying this, as I just went over, to try to do that. Other than that, the application basically says kind of why you're doing it, and how does it meet state goals? We would tie it, we would tie it somewhat to housing, because that's one of the big state goals. We would tie it, uh, we would tie it somewhat to housing because that's one of the big state goals of right now. Is to try to make housing easier.
Is some of the word that you have in you that I haven't really seen before is unified?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a combine, because we didn't try that last time. We, our, yours was a state zoning bylaw.
Could you just explain?
So that means it's a zoning and subdivision in one. And then there was a question about could we also take the flood bylaw and put it in there too? And the answer to that is yes, it could. You think you can have just one bylaw? You wouldn't be remembering, oh, wait, we gotta go over there first and then come back over here.
And if I'm reading this correctly, I believe you also had mentioned earlier that, I'm assuming that we're already in this grant. This meeting that is happening right now would count as one of those public hearings? Or must they be independent of, of, those, can we do a two, a twofer? Or do we have to have a separate one to address the requirements of the grant?
All of this stuff would be in the fall and forward after.
Right, but, but we normally need the first Wednesday of every month.
Yes.
Could we also schedule one of these hearings for the planning commission for the first Wednesday of every month?
Yeah, yeah, you could double up a forum and a working session.
Okay, alright.
Yep, you could certainly do that. Yeah, the, we, we try to write it relatively loose, like we're going to have a meeting of some kind. And then we figure it out with you all, do you want to hold it on a Saturday? Do you want to hold it on during the day? Do you want to do, have muffins? You know, how, how do we want to do this thing to try to get people coming? Because you want people to show up. Uh, do you, you know, do we want to do a video and put it on the town website about like, what's this thing? How's, how's the process actually work?
And I apologize, I haven't, I haven't read through this sheet. I've, I've listened to other comments about it. We are doing this with the select board as co-applicants.
Yeah, the, the resolution form the select board has, requires the select board to sign and the planning commission to sign.
But as I read down after the kickoff?
Yep.
Everything resides here and not with the select board at all?
Pretty much, yeah, the working, the, the baking the cake pretty much happens here. Uh, up to the, the.
But the select board ultimately has to approve it?
Yes, everything, you guys are a committee of the select board, always remember.
Alright, no, I understand that.
And so, but the idea here is instead of going along and then surprising them with anything, they would get copies as we go along. So hopefully if they see something that says, don't do that, we get that early on.
Does it make any sense?
We've always done it down there.
No, I understand, but I'm not reading it in here. Does it make sense that it says ultimately comes back to the select board for approval?
Well, um, that's because we don't put that process in here because we know we can get you to a hearing. Once your hearing happens and, and then their hearing happens and then we get to adoption. We never know what's going to happen at that point. So we can't, we don't write that in the grant. We take you through it, but we don't write it in the grant as a deliverable because.
No, and I realize that the way Hartland would operate, we would pass it on the select board approval.
Yeah.
I guess if I'm reading this as a, a grant reevaluator, I might go, well, who has ultimate approval for it? Or do they just make the assumption that it goes through the approval process for the particular town?
Yeah, it, because statutorily it has to go to the select board. And that's why they make the select board sign off on the application. They don't want just planning commissions taking up things. There is a, uh, a 10% match, so 20,000 is the whole, but then 2,000 is a match. And so the select board's okay with that.
So that, may I ask, yeah, the grant comes from whom?
The state of Vermont. Not federal money, which is nice, so we don't have to worry about that happening or not happening. Uh, yeah.
So, so 18,000 would come from the state and 2,000 from the town, total of 20.
Yeah.
But that doesn't come from our budget?
Uh, we signed off on it on Monday. The town owns the two grand.
So what we need, um, for the resolution is for the planning commission to authorize the chair to sign the, it's called the resolution. It says, you know, yes, we're going to apply for this grant. That's pretty much all it says. It says that John is the administrative officer, the authorizing official as we call him. Then what we do, just so you know, there's guts back in here, is I go off and I type things and, um, and then I make a PDF of that and I send it back out because we don't actually press the button just to submit.
Right, John does.
Yeah, John does. And so then we go, okay, does all this verbiage look right in here? And we check back with John and David on that to make sure we haven't said anything we promised, anything we shouldn't have promised.
Should we do a resolution to?
Can we just move?
Yeah, and then David can sign it whenever, uh, because John still has the resolution itself.
Yeah, we, we signed it and David backed it, John.
Okay, somebody want to make the motion?
I, I move that we support, is that a word that you would want? That we support the pursuit of the Hartland 2025 MPG Town Plan Assistant Grant.
Oh, and that should be bylaw, so not by town, sorry.
Town bylaws?
Yeah.
Rephrase it?
Yeah.
That we support the submission of a grant for the Hartland 2025 MPG Town Bylaw Assistance Grant?
What does MPG stand for?
Oh, municipal planning grant.
Municipal planning grant. That's what we're, that's what we're applying for, right? So we're, you're moving that we apply for?
That we support the application for the, for the grant.
Okay, I second it. Is that 2025 fiscal or calendar?
It's fiscal because I, the legislature passed the money last year.
Right, okay, so that's up until, that's why the grant's awarded before the first.
Yeah, and if they, they would do the award probably in June. And then as I said, we'd, we'd start.
We have what, 18 months with it or something like that? So we could start it after the town plan finally went through.
Let me, let me read the motion back just to make sure it's straight here. I think, I think Steve, we support the, um, the pursuit of the 2025 MPG Town Bylaw.
Assistance Grant.
Grant. Okay. Can we have a second? Uh, I did. Any other discussion?
Or does this, uh, get known to people or, or will it be?
Be in the minutes.
Well, I'm sorry, do it.
So how will this be known to the average person on the street?
It's going to be in the minutes.
And you'll be warning somebody's things too, right?
Oh, assuming you get the grant, yeah, they're, they're.
Assuming that you are administering the grant. Whoever the grant administrator, there's a budget here for warning for the meetings.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, people are going to be sick of you telling them about this thing.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Grant opposed. I'm staying. How about Dan, let's see?
Yeah, I'm good, yes.
No, you're good, but did you vote for?
The physical thing is a grant.
Ye- yes.
So we're supporting the application by the town of Hartland to the housing and development. The housing and community development program for a municipal planning grant.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Good, thank you. And then, um, David can find John and sign a piece of paper. Then we'll just get a PDF that we can upload and stuff. That will also enable the kind of grant system to come alive because we actually can't work on it in the grant until John presses.
Activates.
Okay. Don't go yet.
Don't go yet.
Very quickly, two, two seconds. 2025 Town Plan.
Yes.
You have it. The, um, we, we didn't.
The version 2.2.5.
That's correct. I didn't go to, uh, I did the maps. I didn't go to Peak Fellows. Do we need, need to make special arrangements to, uh, to have them done in your fashion?
Um, eventually.
How, how are we going to work that part of that?
Yeah, if you want us to do them, yes. You know, you need to raise that, there are certain maps that you would kind of, the energy maps, being one of them. You just get those maps from us, we've already made them.
We didn't know where you were in your own plan cycle to see if you had new maps or other maps that we had to also insert.
Y- y- yeah, well, that's a, a good thing, so totally not this, totally different thing. The, the regional plan just got adopted, which is good. And so we have new energy maps. They're basically the same old ones, but they're new ones now. We also have energy targets, uh, and new energy data that towns should be putting in their town plan. And so we've redone what we call the green sheets, which is that thing that's town by town by town about energy and the numbers and this, that, the other thing. So that's available. And that wasn't really available until this year because we hadn't finished our part. We will have a, a town housing target that you could use, but you don't really have to use quite yet. The, I would say the important thing though is we are going to be meeting with you all probably this summer, I would think, on the future land use, the regional future land use map. And it makes sense that that map and your future land use map and the town plan look like each other somewhat. So a lot of towns aren't in the town plan process right now anyways, but we're doing that for everybody. So to me, that will intersect your planning process. And that's, we're under statutory order to do some things to our plan. But the, I think the big thing is in our plan will be where is the village edge? Or the village's edge? And that'll, that'll be the biggest thing.
Okay, just to give you an update on that?
Yes.
We knew that this was coming, so we went back and we had a preliminary discussion that we didn't want to have three corners meeting four corners.
Actually, one big block.
No, no.
No, no, no.
Right, so we, I think we've made that change. Happy to show you just to make sure that we have it down, but that's, that's something that we think.
The maps that are in there in the description?
Yeah.
Echo what Jay just said, is that they do not actually touch.
Yeah, yeah, we would not want them touching.
Okay.
And then you have the, the little section at the top. And, and north.
And north.
And forest blocks are unchanged essentially?
The forest block data is largely unchanged. Your version of that, we, we have some strange things we're dealing with. But your version of that doesn't need to change.
Okay.
Our forest-based resource area will split into two kinds of something. But there may be, as Jay and some of you know, you actually don't have much good forest in terms of habitat. You have a lot of forest, but the data says, yeah, so, so. But you can say, we love it and that's important.
We, we, we grabbed, or I grabbed, your, your data.
Yeah.
And I would say probably 25% of the towns is, is your forest.
Yeah, yeah.
So when you said a little.
So my understanding then is that because we have this sort of, re-adoption followed by the new town plan process?
Yes.
Once the new town plan comes to the fore and begins going through that process, that's when you will take a closer look at our 2025 town plan. And that gives us that window that if we need to make adjustments based on the new information, that we can do that. And then by the time that it probably gets to the select board or maybe after somewhere in that timeline, that will be the product that will go through. That's my hope.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's outside of municipal planning grant, that's just kind of something we're going to be doing.
That will be independent of that, yes.
Thank, thank you for this overtime effort.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, so it's, um, it's good in that you, you really can kind of muck up a bylaw by putting a few wrong words in the town plan and going. Wish, wish they hadn't said quite that specifically. Usually it's specific, you know, because you can put in town plan, like, if a bylaw, we wish you'd make a bylaw. And that's about all you need, you know, you don't need a whole lot more. You do need a future land use map. And the map is not blurry, but in the text you might go, and there's a map and you can kind of squiggle that around. But yeah, so you just don't want too, too much detail that drives you crazy later on. The energy stuff, if we haven't sent it to you, we can send it to you, but it's kind of, it is what it is, the numbers. They're not that different than they, what they used to be. They're just a, a little more updated.
There, there's no longer an energy committee in town, is that true Phil?
Uh, just time issue.
Yeah, so you're, you're, you appear to be the source.
Yeah. And then Kyle Hanson in the office is working on the actual maps. Our future land use map.
We'll have conversations as we need to.
Yes, and we will, we've got, you know, 30 towns to be within 40 weeks, so we're going to, we have a lot of meetings.
He just, uh, we did highlight it.
Yes.
We just did. Phil had a question.
Yeah, and I would say it would fund a local planning initiative around, around a unified bylaw. Yeah, okay.
Do you have questions?
Just a, um, you were talking about the energy piece.
Yes.
Can't help but, you know, wonder what Matt Pillar is going to do with target dates that were sort of set up there.
Well.
So, you know, we know we have to do some of our other parts of the town, but will they affect the energy chapter?
The, um, not unless they change the law. The, the state has put themselves under the gun to meet certain targets and, and especially around the client side of things, they, they're also under the gun, they assume to meet those targets. And they've just come out and said, yeah, we're probably not going to meet those targets. That's on the emissions side. On the, on the generation side, um, the utilities are fine, utilities are moving, their targets fine. The thermal and transportation side, because they are not on target for, is the big, big thing. But in terms of making electricity, we are good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Kevin.
Yeah, okay, and you'll see me and other people more later hopefully.
Don't forget your, don't forget your safety belt.
Oh, yeah. I'll want this one, probably see what it's doing out here.
Night.
Night. Phil, is there anything else that, I don't know if you're here for our business change?
I don't know. I'm assuming everyone saw the email that I sent out about the ITW illegal piece. If there's any questions about that, I can answer those. And, um, I don't think there's anything on Sonny Meade that.
No, we, we haven't heard anything. Usually the, the first word we get is through Peter, we're going to turn. And we haven't heard anything, he's, he's usually, um, just a few hours behind the word from the judges, but we, we have no word. Uh, that's, uh, those are the next things we're coming up. Nothing on, nothing on Sonny Meade and we have no information at all on anything. It's, uh, ITW is doing.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and.
That was all I really wanted, yeah. I wanted to support Kevin and make sure that the changes we talked about on Monday, which he already incorporated. were actually incorporated for them.
Yeah. Yeah, that's pretty good. Okay, we're going to go on to other business.
Should, should we accept those minutes?
Um, I don't think they're going to make it, Mr. Hester.
You're talking the 18th. On the 18th, did you accept the fifth?
We have to, so, so we have to approve the February 5th minutes.
Okay. I wrote them, but I forgot.
Just. No, no, we, we see it.
Okay. Has every, has everybody read the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I have a motion on the minutes from, from the.
I'm moving to accept the minutes of February 5th.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? No? Tony, favor.
Hi.
Bill. Want to post?
He said I.
You came in like, did he, did he say?
He said I.
He said I.
Except for the. No opposed, no extensions. Uh, minutes are approved.
Minutes are approved.
We're down to other business.
Uh.
You said?
Although I'm going to get on the.
Uh, just to let everybody know, we have, uh, we have Dan and Nicole, uh, Dan and Da- uh, oh, David. Donald, oh, Donald Silver. I'm sorry, I thought it was Dave Seagull. Donald Silver. He's an ITW person. Or here for that. David wanted to discuss the town membership.
So we only have.
Maybe. Uh.
Cause Dan's.
No, uh, Dan Gatsi.
Well, Dan Gatsi.
Yes. He's a, if, Dan, I know is also a registered man. Um, the, I'm sorry, what did you say about other business too?
Uh, I, I skipped over the HBC bylaws and the membership issues.
Okay.
But I didn't know if that was your lead or David's lead.
Um, no, that was mine. Uh, I mean, I said, I always send it to Dave and Dan beforehand. Um, the, uh, the bylaws, um, let me back up. After the meeting on the 18th, I went out and I grabbed all the, uh, all the information that we had, had submitted on the ITW case and, um, and the, a set of the bylaws. And I sent them to Michelle so she could upload them to our site. And so I figured, you know, she's pretty good and she does it. Only a couple of days later, the file size was too big. So it didn't happen. So I need to resend them piecemeal so that, um, this is both Sonny Need and ITW. So we can then go back and if someone asks us, well, why did you do this? Or why do you do this? Well, why don't you go on the planning commission website and see what's going on? Which leads me to, uh, to another issue. And I'm going to make a suggestion, somebody else can make the motion. I would really like to put, uh, Peter Raymond's last filing on Sonny Need, uh, on the listserv. It's a, it's a great, I don't know if you've read it.
Have.
It's a great explanation of, of the matter, you know? And I think for people that maybe don't understand it, even though we've written about it and talked about it before, I think they should read that. So I'm really inclined to, uh, to publicize that information.
Are we allowed to do that on a town site?
I'm sorry?
Are we allowed to post a legal opinion on a town site?
Well, we.
That's a.
Is it part of our record that we discussed in our meeting? Because if it is, then I would think.
It's not a legal opinion.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not.
No, it's, it's a public record now because it's been filed in court.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. In any event, I'm, I'm inclined to do that and I'd just like to hear what everybody else's thoughts are. Okay.
I'm fine with it.
Dan?
Yeah.
I think the more information we get out there, the better.
The more people, the better.
Okay.
On everything.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I didn't know if, if you heard me, is if we put it on our site, probably not a lot of people are ever going to see it.
It doesn't make any difference.
What?
You put, you put enough food out there, people eventually will come.
It was put it on the. I was gonna, I wanted to put it on the listserv also with a note, with a note saying that from, from, from this point forward, any opinions that are part of a public record, we're going to post them on the town website.
I would, I would support putting Peter Raymond's document on the town website, but not on the listserv. I would be fine if we wanted to send something from the planning commission encouraging people who would like information about our topics and our meetings and what have you to go to and give them a link to where the planning commission site is, they can go find it there.
Okay. I, I think that's a much better idea. I think that's good. So is it okay if I put on the listserv that the planning commission's information on, on its different projects can be found at hartland.vt.org?
You don't have to list everything, but you can direct them to the site.
Right.
My, my opinion.
Okay.
And I think you can include a link, so all they have to do is push a button.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
How, um, how would we describe that information? Just everything we're working on or are we specifically?
No, if we're, if, well, like, and I, I think whatever appears in either our agenda or our minutes, that's what should go out. So in this particular case, tonight, we had two issues. One was Sonny Need, one was ITW. So I would put out maybe on once a month and once every other month, they would, we would just run in the listserv, uh, if you're looking for information on this, go here quick.
So the legal opinions is simply a small subset. We're looking to inform everything that's in the meeting. So even though you could read the minutes.
It's an extension of.
It's an extension of the minutes.
Yes.
Yes.
Does that work?
Yes. I'm just going to repeat myself.
Did you say something, Dan?
No.
Um, okay. Um. Um, let's go back, let's go to membership for a minute.
You, okay, you want that as a movement?
What's that?
You, you want a motion for that? Or are we just going to do it?
I, I was just going to do it.
I think we can direct the leadership to update the website with the documents that we have reviewed.
Yeah.
And announce it to the town through the listserv. So we're just reminding them of all information is on the town's, down the river.
Okay. Um, I know two members are, are, oh. That what?
I don't know.
Two. I think the three of you are, you're a membership.
Oh, on five?
Yeah. Yeah, in April.
Do we give go watch? Is there anything else?
But only, you give go, but only if they stay. You're not off until 30:30. But anyways, I, I'm not asking for any questions. I'm just reminding people that, that, uh, that at some point before the April select board, uh, we need to inform them of X, Y, or Z.
Do we have any active applicants?
Um.
We'd have to.
There's only. I'm sorry?
We'd have to announce that they were open.
Yeah. Well, the select board will automatically do that if, if there are vacancies, but that leads before we go much further onto the fact, uh, what is our membership period? Is it going to be seven or is it going to be nine? And I would let you know this. Yeah. I guess. Hold on a minute, I gotta find the right section. Well, actually, there's, there's two matters that have to do with, uh, with our bylaws. One is membership. And the other is, are we going to hire somebody to, uh, to take minutes, to, to, to draft the minutes? They still come back to us to modify and then we're the ones that actually put it in the minutes, whatever we want. Has, what do we want to do on this?
Does Michelle want to be on the planning commission?
I'm sorry?
Does Michelle want to be on the planning commission?
I, I haven't, I haven't asked her, but I think she's always been anxious to. So in answer to somebody's question, do we have an active person? I think we probably do.
We have Erin, we have Todd, Todd's still elected.
I'm sorry?
Todd's still elected.
Todd Heyman.
Yeah.
There you go. You got us replaced. I don't know. Do you want to keep doing it, Kate?
Um, I'd like to continue for one more term. Fine. Okay. So that means, do you know what you want to do?
Yeah, I don't want to do the next term.
Okay. In which case. In which case.
It's just Kate because I missed you, right?
I'd like to say that.
So are you 2025 also?
We got seven.
Yeah.
Yeah. You lost? Okay. Okay. So, so that means, um. If we lose you, that means.
We have seven.
We have seven.
And we could have a cap.
We could cap it off at there.
We could have up to nine.
Right. But that's, we can change that number. I, although I think nine is the max, if I'm not mistaken.
Up to nine, I think.
Right. Um, if we, if we moved it to seven, then that's going to preclude asking Michelle.
Um, maybe we ask Michelle to take the minutes for a while and see if there's any attrition down the road.
Okay. Yep.
What should we do?
Can, can Michelle take my place?
Well, then, then you're in need.
Well, so wait, how many Dana? One, two, three, four, five, six.
And Dan? Right.
And Dave.
Indeed.
And Dave.
Yeah. How did I forget?
So we actually have eight.
Sorry, Dave.
And if Rebecca goes off, we will have seven.
Yeah. Like room for no more.
Again?
No, 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 no leftovers, space.
If we, if we put our membership at seven, yes.
Um, okay, argument again for going from nine to seven? Um, I think it was.
I think Dave was concerned by quorums.
Yes, I get that. But, and I think I, I had made the comment, at least with Zoom, it's easier to make a quorum. Yeah. So, you know, four people show up, one on Zoom, well, that's, there's a lot of leeway in that. I don't know, like, maybe, maybe we should not, at the moment, think about changing until we see the shape of the future. We can do it anytime.
That's kind of my.
Is that, I mean, whatever, whatever people want to do. George?
We, um, we do not have to make a change at the moment. If Rebecca is going off and we ask for two reappointments, that will give us seven. And until we request that we fill any vacancies, we live at seven.
Or you don't have to, you don't have to say you have nine, inactive and you pursue nine?
I don't know technically what we have to do.
Yeah, okay.
But if we don't request it, then it stays at the number we have.
Yeah.
Because since John, um, passed, we run with eight, not nine, even though we had nine and there was no request that was sent out to fill it.
No, the only thing is if we, if we're allotted nine, if we have eight, the select board can fill the ninth slot.
They could, but they haven't.
There's one, there's a, there's one person. I, I don't, I, I know who she is. And, uh, but she comes, she's, she spends a lot of time on Zoom site and she's here for some of the meetings. And, uh, I, I know what her name is, it's not leaping into my head.
It's not Helen Edmonds.
Yes. Exactly.
I don't know her.
I've seen her, give a lot of good things like online.
Anyways, it's just a person that shows interest.
Yeah.
Don't know anything else other than that.
Well, why don't we just do it one step at a time?
Okay.
And then put the two up for reappointment and then adding Rebecca's name so they won't reappoint and they're short.
All right. Do you want me to ask, do you want me, me to ask Michelle or do you want, do you guys want to ask Michelle if she wants to be on?
I think Dave should ask.
Okay.
If. I'll talk to you about that.
Yeah.
It seems to me that things are running relatively well. And that we don't have any issues on the table that are consuming us, uh, or providing much anxiety right now, although they're there, but it just, you know, it isn't a hot topic of, uh, what's a, what's a real topic? And we have a working relationship using the, the virtual, uh, I think we've learned how to use it. It doesn't break down, so every other meeting and, uh, that's good. And I don't know what is anything that people are afraid of, bite us, uh, on the 31st of September. So, uh, I, I would go along, uh, as we are and not, because once you throw a number in, that in and of itself generates, uh.
Attention.
Attention. And it teaches them pretty well. Uh, or am I wrong?
I, I don't think you're wrong. When, when we cast forward through 2025 into 2026, what do we see on the agenda? I mean, the macro issue was the town plan. This, so, so I've been on the website and that application looks voluminous. And so you feel that could consume us for?
You basically, I, I heard you say, what agenda items do we have? I don't know about consume us. This is an agenda item that we have right now.
Any other big, big projects? Can't get any bigger than the town plan, right?
No. zoning movements.
Right.
Well, ye- 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 yes, which.
I could see whether you'd want to forget that.
Yeah, 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 which is an extension. He, he made it very clear, like, yeah, extension. Um, yeah, okay. So that's the, that's the project going forward.
I think we're, we're in a more manageable place than trying to get a town plan off the deck.
Yeah. Because.
Because there's assistance there.
Well, all the foundational work went into place.
Hopefully, a lot of that town plan translates fairly cleanly into here or at least facilitates the conversation.
I, I am going to send everybody a, a copy.
Of what you developed in 15?
Yeah. And what, what went to the select board. And they read it and you had a publication.
The climate's different now, too.
Oh, I, I know that. I'm just saying to you, that, that's how far it got along. It wasn't, you know, like.
A decade ago.
Draft one.
Yes.
It, it's there and it's, uh, but, but I think everybody should read it to get a sense.[1755.12] It's there, and it's, but I think everybody should read it to get a sense.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
And Jay, if you could, I could not find the commission bylaws anywhere.
We found them one time.
The webpage, the partner went back into the webpage. From all of me, I couldn't find.
I'm gonna do it, take my copy.
And scan, I'll, I'll get it back to you.
No, don't get it back to me, I got, I got it at home. As I say, I sent it to Michelle, but I got it.
Would you like me to everybody to?
No, of course.
I'll scan and send copies out?
Huh? No, no, I'll, I'll send it out to everybody tomorrow. Not a fact, I won't even.
You're gonna make me read this to life?
It's only three pages.
Steve, yeah, I couldn't find it either, so.
I did go in and look several times. It wouldn't hurt if you just send a copy around. It's not. I'll clean it up. Jay, I will be happy to scan this and send it out to everybody, so you don't have to do it.
Thank you. But can, can we come back to the minutes?
Just under town.
Do we?
Yeah. Under town plans and do.
You do a lot of.
The planning commission.
Isn't that the minutes here?
It's like two thirds of the way down.
I don't, yeah, you don't send it to me.
The last time, it's the first time I sent it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I'll send this one to you, too.
You know how many, you know how many times I looked at this call?
I know, right?
It's tucked in.
I think I just read Hartland Commission, and I don't think I went to the bylaw. Thank you.
Yeah.
I did, I remember.
It doesn't have a date like everything.
It was adopted 2015.
Yeah, that's, yeah, June 30.
I don't have the agenda in front of me, I've recovered everything.
Yes.
By now, yes.
Any other or new business, and that was about it. But everything else was good.
Yeah, I do, the ones adopted June 3rd, 2015.
Correct.
Yeah, because I downloaded them when we found them.
I'd say one, you know what, Rebecca. No, seriously, I'm glad you pointed. Can't tell you how many times I looked through there, just looked right through and went past it.
It just wasn't intuitive.
I might have looked right past it.
Well, it's a jumble.
Together, they did. Because I don't get it, no, no.
Are we adjourned?
Want a motion for adjournment?
Second? Yeah, third.
Okay. All favor indicate by standing in the.
Now that we're not an official meeting.
Yeah, it's good, it was rainy today, but.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Dan. I'll send you, I'll, I'll send you an email.
Okay. All right, I'm signing off tonight, everybody.
Good night, Danny.
Bye bye.
Somewhere on the west coast.
George, what were your issues?
I'm just curious what resulted of the town meeting.
I think John Broker's counter was such a lovely change.
Yes.
You know what was unfortunate? They televised.
Well, one didn't get turned off.
The guy with the step on the.
It's all fuzzy in our theater.
Oh, I had a hard time with the select board meeting when I zoomed in.
See, it was Monday, I used the public access. I zoomed in, and I had a hard time because I was out in California.
Did you have a tough time at town hall? The, the town meeting?
My wife was watching it on the television, and it was just fuzzy and.
I was watching it down here because I was doing the polls. It was wonderful. And my understanding is that from the other day, like, well.